Yeah.
I gotta tell you.
Laura, as soon as you're ready, let me know.
Okay.
Those were designed to not punish public service.
No, no. That's ridiculous.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
I thought of going home.
How many of the local architects? Big crowd tonight?
He's, I don't know this guy. Okay, alright.
No Wang?
Just Allison. I don't see her, but. Sorry, our coordinator had to wait for an elevator that never came. So, I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:09 PM. We'll take a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. That was a trick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe we have any media students here tonight. So, that means Mr. Schmidt's running the camera, right? No, no, okay, okay. Alright, well now recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our, we gotta do roll call first. Let's do that first.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Mr. Rollins. Mr. Stravano.
Here.
Mrs. McCullough.
Here.
Dr. Harner.
Here.
Mr. Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Powers.
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
Okay, now we'll recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff, and Mr. Earl Dotson Jr. will be presenting, I believe. Okay?
Good evening and thank you. RPS 205 had seventeen schools participate in the Peace Chain Project, part of the International Day of Peace on September nineteenth. The chain was on display at the Midtown Ethnic Festival and Parade. Students explored what peace means to them and ways they can contribute to peace in the world. This is the second year our students participated, and tonight, we have the chain on display. Hopefully, you can all see the lovely chains around the room. Thank you to the organizers of this project and the International Day of Peace for, again, hosting an important event for our students and the community. Please join me in thanking the organizers and the participators in this project. Thank you. This evening, we have with us to accept these certificates are Jim and Pam Keeling, Lois Lutz, and Karen Biskie, all friends of the district. Please stand. Come on up.
Thank you. I'm Jim Keeling, and it's a pleasure to be here. This was our twelfth year of the International Day of Peace, and every single year, the Rockford Public Schools have been the major partner. This year, there were a thousand children that came, mostly third to fifth graders, and we really love that this project has gone into the schools as well as just being at the Peace Plaza. It's, it was an incredible month overall with lots of activities that ended up right down here in the parking lot at the school district property with this ethnic festival, which is already taking off to, to help embrace our diversity as a community and to celebrate it and to understand how we're all so much alike. The month was great, and it really ended this week when Malala was, was given the Nobel Peace Prize to understand the importance of education of children in the world and the celebration of it and our common aspiration to, to reach this goal of bettering our lives through education. So, we're so pleased to be here and to be partners with this school district and with our whole, our community in these events. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Pam has a gift for you as well. We brought you each a peace ball that we hope you'll keep at your desks to think about this activity through the year.
PM, good to see you.
Karen, good to see you.
Okay. Alright, very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Karen, how are you? Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is it edible?
No, okay. Jim is a West High graduate. Thank you for being here.
Rockford Public Schools staff and volunteers were recognized in the spring at the annual Those Who Excel Awards banquet. We'd like to recognize the winners for all they do for RPS 205 and its students. The Classroom Teacher Award went to Lynn Olsen from Auburn High School. The Principal Award went to Darcy Dunn from Fairview Early Childhood Center. The Student Personnel Award went to Susan Busker from Whitehead Elementary School. The Educational Service Personnel Award went to Kim Walter from Rolling Green Elementary School. The Community Volunteer Award went to Dan Miller from Bloom Elementary School. The Early Childhood Career Educator Award went to Erica Davis from Risa Middle School. Four of our award winners will also be recognized at the state level, three with the Award of Excellence and one with the Award of Merit. Susan Busker, Darcy Dunn, and Lynn Olsen will each receive the Award of Excellence from the state. Dan Miller will receive the Award of Merit at the Illinois State Board of Education's Those Who Excel banquet later this month. Lynn Olsen, the band director at Auburn, is also a finalist for the state's Teacher of the Year Award. She is among twelve finalists, and the announcement will be made later this month. Please join me in congratulating these wonderful finalists and the contributions they make to our school district, and I believe we have some of them here with us this evening. So, I know with the, here's Lynn Olsen. Susan Busker is here. And Darcy Dunn is also here with us.
Great job. Congratulations.
Good to see you in Bloom.
Congratulations. Darcy, good to see you. Congratulations.
It's really cool.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. We are now at the petitions and communications portion of our meeting, when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communications portion of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of thirty minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you will be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and to conduct our meeting in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the Board. It's not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators to discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. Two names will be called. At one time, the one whose turn it is to speak and the person who is next. When you are the second person, please come up to the front and sit in the vacant chair. That way, we can allow the most, maximum efficiency of our time. We thank you for your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines. We have clocks on the wall to help you with the timing. So, our first speaker tonight is Allison Wang, to be followed by Mike Lindstrom.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Students are not staying in their home school. According to the Illinois Report Card, in 2013, the mobility rate in Auburn High School was fifteen percent. The high school dropout rate was seven percent. In plain English, this means that fifty percent left and seven percent dropped out. This adds up to twenty-three percent gone. In 2014, the number of freshmen at Auburn was eight hundred and fifteen, and the number of graduates was two hundred and ninety-nine. When you take two hundred and ninety-nine and divide it by eight hundred and fifteen, you get thirty-six point seven percent. This means that only about thirty-five to forty percent of freshmen who walk through the door on the first day of school are able to make it through the same high school to graduate. So, this also means that for about every ten freshmen who walk through that door, only about four of them will make it. And okay, when you actually do calculate the graduation rate using the formula provided by the state, you get a percentage of about sixty to seventy percent depending on the school and the year. But you still cannot change the fact that students are leaving their school. So, now, I just pose a humble question. Why are students leaving their school? Does it stem from when they first step into kindergarten or first grade and they feel like they're wasting time? Is it because they were never interested in learning from that very beginning? Will building schools really solve this problem? Is building schools the true priority here? These are questions that are of utmost importance and that we all have to consider when you vote for the referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Mike Lindstrom, to be followed by Ron Billy. Can I have you push that button there?
Didn't really have anything prepared here. I'm just an observer of what's been going on throughout the past, say, forty years in education in Rockford. And I have to say, I don't think the students trust the Board, you know? And I don't think that the students can learn in an atmosphere that's where it's, where everything's neglected, things are not maintained, you know? Right now, everybody wants to, I mean, I can see that the Board has a predetermined agenda to demolish schools that are foundations of neighborhoods, and I think that's a bad example to set for, for neighborhoods, you know? Because if you're living in a hundred-year-old neighborhood, you tear down a hundred-year-old school and you say, you say to that neighborhood, "We have a, we have a, we're tearing down your foundation, and maybe, maybe you, maybe your house isn't worth that either if we're voting to destroy these schools." Maintenance for the schools that were built to last a lifetime. We have heard stories of trees falling on schools that have been, talking about Centerville School, you know? Tree fell on that school. Nothing happened to the foundation of that school. And, I'm just, I, I, I'm, I feel bad for the Board to base a foundation in mistrust, you know? And, and I hope, I hope you guys learn to make the community to trust you again. Thank you.
Got my mic? It was Ron Billy to be followed by Kate Schnell.
Hi, my name's Ron Billy. I am the current president of the Northern Illinois Chapter of the American Institute of Architects, and I'm here to discuss our concerns and comments regarding the RFQ fifteen dash zero seven about the architectural services. While we know and we understand that there are many factors going into determining what architect that you select for your coming up projects, and we understand that sometimes a project scope and the necessity requires you to hire an architect from out of the region. However, after reviewing the scope of work that's required for these five schools, our feeling as a Board is that the scope of work that is required for these schools is not out of the capabilities, the capacity, the technical competence of any of the local firms. We are excited for the one firm that is getting the opportunity to be awarded, potentially awarded one of these projects. We're also in this community. We're heavily invested in this community. Many of our members are involved in Alignment Rockford as well as Transform Rockford. And I think when we, we think about this, we're looking at the message that may be sent to these students that we are investing our time and energies in by doing mentoring, going into the schools, working at the expos, job shadowing. What message are we sending about transforming Rockford if transforming Rockford means that we're going to bring outside talent from outside the region to improve the environments of our learning facilities? And as also being in the community, we have children that are participating in the Rockford Public Schools on our tax dollars, and when we invest in our dollars back, what we receive, we're reinvesting it back into the community where we're at. And we are right here. And we are right here. We're local. We are quick to answer any question. I've talked to one of the architects who's worked on one project. He's visited the site three times in one week, and that's a factor that would be considered when you're hiring a firm potentially well outside the region. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Kate Schnell is our final speaker.
You know, I agree with this guy, because I noticed that about a firm on Chicago, you know, being hired... Anyway, I agree with him. I mean, we have private contractors that are from Rockford here. I mean, the guys that are doing the building are from Rockford here, so why aren't these guys? But anyway, I got to get off of that. I got to talk about... I got to focus on kids, really. I could talk about corruption for every day, but let me just start with, I believe every child of 205 deserves the right to be taught to read fluently, with ease, with a natural gait, as simple as kids walk, as kids run. Our kids are taught to get by in reading, to get by well enough. They can read the dollar menu. They can take the driver's test. They hit the wall when they have to take 21st century career-ready, career and college-ready tests to get into college. And that's why we have the highest rate of remedial classes in English and reading over at Rock Valley. I had a great conversation the last time... I'm looking over here thinking of this. Great conversation with a Board member about where can we start with class size, because I really think it's kindergarten, or pre-K actually, through third grade. We got to bring it down. Let's just work with our empowerment schools first. We can't do 30. You're right. We can't do 30. Let's start with our empowerment zones first. And here's the other beautiful thing I discovered. We have a national blue-ribbon winner all the way up in South Beloit. We don't even have to go down to Nashville. We don't have to send people to Boston, anywhere. We can just go up to... What is that? Prairie Hill School? And that's one out of 300 schools in the country are awarded this. And guess what? Their biggest prize that they're proud of is their school board, and that they keep the class size low. Kindergarten, they have four kindergartens, 17 in one class, 16 in each other classes, and it's all the way up through K, through K through... No, pre-K through fourth. Class size matters.
Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Kate. Are there any Board member comments at this time? Mr. Connor.
Want to give a shout-out to the 205 girls' golf team. They did a great job this year, have a great season. As a recap, they won the conference. They beat Boylan, 161 strokes to 174. Boylan hasn't been beat in eight years. Congratulations on that. The girls' golf was second at regional, and Madison Peterson won the sectional. So I'd ask everybody to give a really large round of applause for the girls' golf team. What a great job they did.
Any other Board member comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll now at the consent portion of our agenda, including the following consent items. The meeting minutes from September 30th and September 23rd of 2014. The Rock Valley College in-kind contribution facility fee waiver, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under $10,000. And the following bid recommendation for RFQ-1507, the architectural services for additions and renovations at five schools. Recurring contracts of addendum, speech and language pathologist contract with Sunbelt. Intervention Development, LLC Victor Morris. 16,800 recurring grant acceptance, the Community Foundation Support of Education Through the Arts and Nurse Staff Coverage Contract. Other consent items, including the appointment of Facilities Oversight Committee members, the investment... Bless you. The investment report, the interest transfer report, the resolution authorizing and directing preparation of the tentative 2015-16 budget, and the Freedom of Information Act log. Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Are there any consent items that Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson.
Eight.
Eight?
Nine E.
Nine E, okay.
Ten A.
Ten A. Any others? If not, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the consent items not pulled.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
And I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of the bid recommendation RFQ-1507 Architectural Services.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor, seconded by Mr. Rollins. Any discussion? Ms. Powers.
Could somebody... Did this go through Ops Committee, or could somebody just speak to any discussion that was had around this significant dollar amount?
Mr. Rollins.
It did go through the Operations Committee. There was a significant amount of discussion. We had a similar presentation to what we just heard during the presentation evening. There was, I think, a spirited discussion among the committee members at that point. I think we had six committee members present, and it was forwarded to the Board with a recommendation for approval, the two. While this appears to be a significant amount of money, one of the things we talked about, and one of the things I think I did point out, I'm not a fan of sending work out of town. We have done a significant amount of work, a very significant amount of work to date so far. It's all gone to local architects. Was a process that was used. There was an evaluation process that was explained to us at the Operations Committee. They followed a matrix, and the result of that evaluation process was the recommendation that's before the Board. And I think Mr. Schmidt could describe the evaluation process, or Mr. Belling perhaps could describe it if you want more detail about the evaluation process. But at the end of the day, appeared to have followed the process that they set out. They used the rubric that they used, the scoring rubric. The people who were doing the evaluation, this was their recommendation, and I certainly don't have any reason to overturn their recommendation.
Any other... Ms. McCullough.
And it is my understanding, please share with us, that part of that rubric was whether or not they were local. I mean, that was considered as part of it, and still people surfaced higher on the list in spite of that. So that was... There was consideration given.
Correct. Yes, Mr. Schmidt. Seeing no other comments or questions, I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of item 8A RFQ-1507.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
I'll now take a motion and a second for the nine E, the nurse staff coverage contract.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor, seconded by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussions on the nurse staff coverage?
I do have a question. So is this contract just for coverage just in case is what it sounds...
Mrs. Fisher is here, I believe.
At this moment in time, RCM does staff one-to-one nurse for one child, and then they would be considered an alternate if I had staff absences that I couldn't fill through my own people.
Okay, but we have a contract with INVO. That's another vendor.
Invo.
How much is that contract?
For Invo?
Yeah. Do you know? A dollar amount?
I'm just guessing. About $300,000.
About $300,000?
Mm-hmm.
And we have our own pool of guest nurses?
Correct.
Okay.
Which we would call on first.
So are they going to be paid the $10,000 no matter what? I guess that's my question, or is this as we use their services?
Based on need.
Based on need.
Mm-hmm.
So you're just asking for approval up to $10,000?
Correct.
Okay. Ms. McCullough.
For clarification, you said that we do have a one-to-one for a student in the district currently?
Correct.
Since there's only one, and we have other students in the district who have nursing care, is that because we as a district chose this company to bring a nurse in to work with that? Why is it we haven't hired someone, or why is it... I mean, this wasn't chosen by the family, obviously.
Correct. I tried to find staffing through my own people first, were unable to, and then based on the bid recommendation, Invo was given the opportunity to fill that need. They were unable to do so, so then we went to the alternate vendor.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the nurse staff coverage contract.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll now take a motion and a second for item 10A, which is the appointment of the Facilities Oversight Committee.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor, seconded by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson.
So are you going to present this committee? Are they here tonight?
They are not here. The information was sent to you via email, and it was in your packet tonight.
Is there a committee charge? I didn't see that.
The committee... The purpose of the committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was...
That's in the packet, too.
That was approved at a previous Board meeting. I don't have that in front of me. Mr. Harner might have that with him. Okay, I probably have it in my briefcase, but...
But the purpose of the Facilities Plan Oversight Committee shall be to oversee the administration's implementation of the Board-approved 10-year facilities plan as amended on August 12, 2014, and as may be amended by the Board from time to time thereafter.
Okay. I'm just pulling out the list of names. The two Board members that we're recommending are Mike Carner, who will chair the committee, and Mike Connor, and the five community members that were selected were Kevin Merchant, Carrie Eklund, Einer Forsman, Rebecca Anderson, and Josephine Minor. That list I emailed to you a couple weeks ago, and it was in your packet tonight. Ms. McCullough.
I would just appreciate if you would speak to... I'm so appreciative of this community stepping up. We had a lot of applicants, a lot of very qualified, who could have brought many strengths and chose a great committee, I'm sure. But if you would speak to the processes to how the committee was chosen, and just a little bit about how many people applied and the like, because it was a good...
We did. We had a great response from the community. We had at least 20 applicants. We had that... That was an application form that we had online to answer questions about, to give input on what they thought the purpose and what their role could be. And we had great, great applicants, and Mike and I met and went through those and ranked the applications that we had based on their qualifications and their response. So the two things we looked at was their qualifications and their work experiences related to facilities or construction projects and things like that, or finance were the two things that we focused on, and then their answers to their questions on, you know, what they felt the role was going to be. So good, good, good process followed, I think, and we had great people to pick from.
How many?
How many? About 20?
Yeah.
Yeah, so... Any other questions? Ms. Jackson?
No, actually, just a comment. I know that you stated that it was included in our Board packet, but I'd just like to have the conversation for the sake of transparency and openness, just to have that.
Sure.
So that's why I asked those questions.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep. The community members, I can, if you'd like, I can go through where they're employed, if that would help you. But anyway, it's in your packet. Okay, great, thank you. So what the next step will be is that Mike Carner will determine the date of the first meeting, and we'll put an agenda together, and we will go over the charge and what the responsibilities that committee will be, and how often they will need to meet, and what their purpose is, and the reports that will be required back to the Board from that committee. So anything else you want to add?
I'm going to reach out to all the Board members for some input, for their expectations, and I will put some thoughts together that I've already... That I'll be sending out tomorrow, and we'll go from there.
Seeing no other questions, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of 10A, the appointment of the Facilities Oversight Committee members.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and one no.
Was it six?
Excuse me, six yeses and one no.
Six yeses and one no.
Excuse me, please.
Okay, that's okay. You're allowed one mistake a year, and that was it, so... Okay. We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the appointment of Gary Griffin as a 10-month dean at East High School, the HR organizational report and addendum, the closed session consent items, student discipline, where student discipline in which expelled or suspended students are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. The recommended expulsions for MF5 and DS15 are held in abeyance contingent upon a conditional probation agreement for the remainder of the school year. The recommended expulsion for KL6 is held in abeyance contingent upon a conditional probation agreement for the remainder of the first trimester. AB7 and MR11 are expelled for the remainder of this school year, and the following students have been granted a conditional probation agreement. JJM1, CDE2, AAG3, MDN4, CEJ10, DQB13, and AH14. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. Any items that Board members would like to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson.
11A.
11A. Okay. Any others? Now I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the items not pulled.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
And I'll take a motion and a second for the item 11A, which is the appointment of the dean at East High School.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Dr. Harner. There is no discussion. I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of item 8, 11A.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Thank you. We are now on to the next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett.
Thank you. The election's coming up, some really important issues, and we're going to have an opportunity to have a forum with our local legislators to talk about an issue that Mr. Lewis is going to shed some light on, talking to the Board about support for Senate Bill 16, or whatever derivation that comes in when it comes out of the House. But school funding at the state level, whether it's the income tax issue, whether it's Senate Bill 16, or issues that provide districts that have less property wealth the opportunity to have additional resources to educate their students. There's an issue that we're pushing for involving how Title I funds are utilized in terms of the percentage of pension that's held back by the state, the pension cost shift. There are a lot of really important issues, and we're looking forward to the Board and all of our local legislators turning out to have what we hope is a robust conversation around those issues, and just know that we want voters to be informed and on all those topics as things come forward, and certainly we want our Board to consider taking a stand on the issue as it pertains to Senate Bill 16 this evening, and Mr. Lewis will provide some of the additional details. But we're talking about a potential $18 million difference in revenue, which we feel like could do some great things, not only for local property tax relief, but also to invest in our children. Thank you.
We are now on to committee reports, so I'll have Mrs. McCullough give the Education Committee report.
The Education Committee has not met since our last meeting, but I would like to give an update. We had put off making any changes to the committee this year because we were waiting to see whether or not our two board committees would continue as they currently are. And since, at a discussion of the Board, was at a retreat, I think that was at a retreat, we decided to wait and continue with the current committee structure until a strategic plan is put forth, and that really won't happen until next spring. So, we would like to take an opportunity, both Mr. Rollins and I, to open our committees if anybody would like to apply for the rest of this year. We'll have applications online, we'll accept the applications through November 14th, and then, Mr. Rollins and I, per policy, board policy, will review those applications and make any changes to the committee for the rest of this year. So, I'll ask to make sure that the, you know, the coordinator has those applications online, and we'll repeat, you know, will we revisit this at our next board meeting on the 28th? We'll both revisit it at our committee meetings the first week of November, and then, by the end of the second week in November, we'll have, hopefully, whatever applicants may or may not be, or may be interested. If you're unable to download an application online, you can call our, the coordinator, the superintendent's office, and they, I'm sure, will be happy to mail one, or you can come in and pick one up. And that's my report.
Mr. Rollins, you can proceed with the Operations Committee report.
The Operations Committee did meet in this room on October 7th at 5:30 PM. We had a report on preliminary enrollment numbers from Mr. Schmidt. These are not official numbers, this is not the official fall housing report, but preliminarily, year over year, we appear to be down a little over 200 students this year from the numbers that we had last year. Mr. Schmidt will be giving a formal report based on our fall housing moment, our fall housing audit at the next Operations Committee meeting. Mr. Lewis presented a resolution authorizing and directing preparation of a tentative 2015-2016 budget. That is on our agenda later on tonight for the Board to consider. I'll just mention that that was recommended by the Operations Committee unanimously. Had a presentation from our bond underwriter, Stifel Nicolaus, about funding options for the capital plan. Originally, the community authorized us to issue $139 million in general obligation bonds. The consensus was not to issue that all at once. There are timelines, you have to spend the money within a certain period of time after it's been, the bonds have been issued. So we originally issued $100 million in bonds. The recommendation is that we, initial recommendation anyways, we look at issuing the other 39 million early 2015. There was some discussion of the Board, looking at the committee, I'm sorry, at the Operations Committee, about looking at different options. They will be coming back to us at the next Operations Committee meeting, modeling a couple of different options. But if we are going to issue that second tranche of bonds in early 2015, that's action that the Board would need to take, probably at one of the November meetings, in order for the bonds to be issued in early 2015. So that should be coming up. Mr. Schmidt gave us a date on the facilities master plan. Part of that was the approval of the architect RFQ that we've already voted on tonight. Other part, really, of the discussion was the approval of the construction schedule. That is also on the agenda separately tonight, so I'll defer discussion on that than to say that that was approved, the proposed schedule was approved or recommended to the Board by the Operations Committee with a five-to-one vote with one absence. We, I did ask at the end when we could expect to see the audit for the last fiscal year. The expectation is that we'll be getting that, or seeing that, in November. And the other thing that I would mention is just to echo Mrs. McCullough, we are going to be taking applications for new community members. Going to leave that open through November 14th, that gives people about a month to apply. So if you are interested in serving as one of the community members of the Operations Committee, please get your application in. This meeting of the Facilities Committee will be, or the Operations Committee, sorry, will be November 4th at 5:30 PM. Thanks.
Thank you. There are no action items for tonight's meeting. However, we have a long, did you have some questions?
That's election night. You really want to do that? I'm just asking.
Oh.
Up on the TV.
Okay, okay. Vote early and often. Okay, so, okay. However, we have a long list of board policies that our attorney, Lori Holdley, will be doing a first reading of and hitting the highlights.
All right. This is our annual update, and so, a lot of the changes are recommended by the Illinois Association of School Boards and/or driven by statutory changes. There's a couple that are brought by administration, and I'll highlight those as well. The first is Policy 2.20, Powers and Duties of the School Board. This change incorporates changes recommended by the Illinois Association of School Boards, and they include the statutory indemnification provisions for board members within the board policy. It's not a change in the statute, this has always been the case, but IASB recommends this be included in the policy. Board Policies 2.30, which is the Board of Education Elections, and 2.110, Board of Education Qualifications, Terms and Duties, are being revised to reflect statutory changes to the election laws, and primarily, this is that the county electoral board is now responsible for hearing objections to school board member petitions. So no longer will the Board of Education have to convene a panel to hear any objections. Board Policy 4.30, Revenue and Investments, is being changed to reflect the changes to the Public Funds Investment Act, which now allows school districts to invest its public funds in interest-bearing bonds of any state, county, or municipal government. 4.60, Purchases and Contracts, is being revised to incorporate statutory changes related to the health and criminal history background checks for contractors who have direct daily contact with one or more students. Board Policy 4.100, Insurance Management, reflects the new statutory requirement to provide catastrophic accident insurance coverage with a maximum of $3 million or five years of coverage for student athletes who sustain accidental injury while participating in school-sponsored athletic events sanctioned by IHSA, and that result in medical expenses in excess of $50,000. Board Policy 4.170, Operational Services Safety, incorporates statutory changes requiring schools to adopt and implement a written plan for responding to medical emergencies and complying with the requirement for the placement of automatic external defibrillators, as well as the training of anticipated users. Policy 5.08, Employment Policies and Recruitment, is being changed by administration, or through administration's recommendation, clarifying that the language in the policy will indicate that a written application of employment is required. Currently, the policy indicates that an application is required. So, it's to clarify that, yes, indeed, it's written, it's not verbal. That's what administration has recommended. Board Policy 5.30, Hiring Processing Criteria, is being changed, or recommended for change according to the school code. Health examinations for employees must be in accordance with the rules adopted by the Illinois Department of Public Health, or by order of a local public health official. As of August 2014, the Illinois Department of Public Health no longer requires school employees to be screened for tuberculosis, except for those employees assigned to preschool or at childcare facilities. So, that policy is being recommended for change as a result of that changed by IDPH. Board Policy 5.90, Abused and Neglected Child Reporting, and Policy 6.250, Community Resource Persons and Volunteers, is being recommended for change. In order to... 5.90 and 6.250. 5.90 sets forth the statutory criteria for training staff in the detection and reporting and prevention of child abuse and neglect, and both board policies, 5.90 and 6.250, incorporate changes made to the criminal code, which makes the failure to report a hazing incident a criminal offense. So that's the change that's being recommended. And 6.250 specifies that volunteer coaches are also required to comply with the hazing reporting requirements, and we have to train staff and volunteers on that. 5.100, Staff Development Program Policy. This is updating the policy to include a new statutory mandate, or the new statutory mandates for training staff, such as and including training staff on anaphylactic reactions and management, abused and neglected reporting requirements, and teen dating violence. 5.125, Personal Technology and Social Media. Administration is recommending adding the term Instagram as an example of a picture-based social media. So, as technology changes, they're trying to incorporate all of the types of technology that's included in the personal technology and social media policy. It adds Instagram, one word.
Changed that policy though not too long ago, right? Wasn't this a policy?
You did, but, yes, so, this was to clarify and add Instagram. That's the recommendation. Hmm? Mm-hmm. Well, they are using that as an example of pictorial base, so it's really just an example. Mm-hmm. 5.260, Student Teachers Policy. It revises the policy to incorporate statutory changes related to health and criminal history background checks for student teachers who have direct daily contact with one or more students. 5.265, District Truancy Officers. This changes to accurately reflect the district's reporting structure internally. So it has some antiquated language in there, and namely, the truancy duties and responsibilities are overseen by the Student Support and Alternative Learning Department, not the truancy department, I guess, or whatever's named in there. The social, student social and emotional development policy, Board Policy 6.65. The changes reflect mandates of the Children's Mental Health Act. 6.220 and 6.240, Field Trips Policies. 6.220 is being recommended for revocation inasmuch as the language is duplicative of 6.240, and that which is not duplicative is incorporated into 6.240. In addition, Board Policy 6.240 is being updated to reflect changes recommended by the Illinois Association of School Boards. Board Policy 6.235, Access to Electronic Networks. Those changes reflect curriculum mandates related to teaching students about appropriate online behavior and the prohibition of cyberbullying. 6.310, Credits for Alternative Courses and Programs. These recommendation, recommended changes are to update the policy to allow for credit to be issued for completing a vocational academic, or academy program, as is provided for in the Vocational Academies Act, and it revises the P exemption language to be consistent with that recommended by IASB, and to incorporate the recent changes to the school code related to special education students. Namely, special education students may be excused from PE when the student is participating in an athletic program outside of the school setting. So that's the statutory change. 7.50, School Admissions and Student Transfers to and from non-district schools. The recommended changes reflect changes to the compulsory attendance laws, namely, the compulsory age for attendance is now lowered from seven years of age to six years of age. 7.60, Student Residence. Changes are recommended by IASB. It merely states that the procedural requirement set forth in the school code, and so, that's all it states, the statutory language.
Is that the one that's taken off of the record?
Yes. So it just, it just incorporates the statutory language as recommended by IASB.
So this entire red line, these two paragraphs are from IASB?
Illinois Association of School Boards, as recommended, but it reflects the statutory language, the existing statutory language. 7.70, Attendance and Truancy. The recommended changes reflect changes to the compulsory attendance laws, and that would be, again, lowered from seven years to six years. In addition, it recommends changes by IASB. 7.240, Conduct Code for Participants in Extracurricular Activities. That incorporates statutory prohibitions against hazing and bullying. 7.280, The Communicable and Chronic Infectious Disease Policy, and 7.282, The Management of Students with AIDS/ HIV, are being recommended for change. The management of students with AIDS/ HIV was adopted as a result of the AIDS Confidentiality Act. This act has now been changed, and it prohibits the disclosure of the identity of a student who has been tested for AIDS/ HIV, as well as the results of such a test. That change, along with other changes to the act, essentially renders Board Policy 7.280 irrelevant, and for the portions of the policy which are not unlawful or irrelevant, they're duplicative with Board Policy 7.280, and the implementing administrative procedures for handling confidential matters related to students with communicable and chronic infectious diseases.
Ken?
You have a question?
I do.
Okay.
On X, the conduct code for the extracurricular, you said that there was a, is that, was that statutory regarding the cyberbullying?
Which policy, again, I'm sorry?
Or was that a recommendation X? 7.240.
Conduct for participants in extracurricular.
Yeah, did I hear you correctly? We're adding language, right?
Right. The prohibition of, that's statutory, hazing and bullying, yes.
It is statutory. All right, because what I wondered, we already have a policy on that, don't we? So it wouldn't be considered a duplicate?
Well, this goes specifically to the extracurricular, so while we have a policy that specifies, and it also applies to extracurricular activities, so that there's no confusion that it only applies to in-school conduct.
Okay.
Mrs. McCullough?
I thought our cyberbullying extended beyond the walls of a big school and classroom to even what students do in their homes at night in terms of bullying. Is it?
You have to be very careful with what students do in their homes at night with regard to bullying. There still has to be a connection or significant disruption to school.
Thank you.
7.285, The Food Allergy Management Program Policy, reflects statutory requirements to implement a policy and administrative procedures for food allergy management. 8.30, The Visitors to and Conduct on School Property. The recommended changes to this policy are driven by IASB, and notably, the policy incorporates the federal drug-free workplace restrictions related to marijuana. So although marijuana is, medical marijuana is approved in the state of Illinois, the statute also specifically excludes any marijuana on schools, school district property. So that's to clarify that.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Could you repeat? No. Any discussion on any of those? Mr. Connor?
I want to thank Ms. Holdley for providing the information that will allow me to sleep a little better at night, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That's pretty darn good.
That's very fast.
I just have to point out, there are certainly a lot of changes here that affect the health and safety of our children that relates to your area, Mary, so I'm hoping you're up to date on all of these things, and get all of our staff trained the way they need to be for all of those things, so. Mrs. McCullough?
A quick question.
Can you hit your light? Your light went off. Yeah.
5.08, Employment Policies and Recruitment. And the change on that was that you had to have a written application as compared to a verbal application, and the way it's written, it just says "an" application. You've actually redlined the word "written," but I thought the idea was to have a written application. So having taken that out, is that because we do online? I mean, what is the, I'm looking at, yeah, page one on 5.08, and it says "an" application, and the word "written" has been redlined. "And interview." We interview for every single position. We interview for every single position in the district?
The policy has not changed, and it actually had personnel. It should be personal if you're going to do it that way, but "interview," that's always been in the policy. The "written," it looks like there's been an error in how that's displayed. It should be underlined, adding it, not deleting it. So I'll make sure that's changed for the next meeting.
And that is to capture also any online applications?
Correct.
That should be captured. And we, and my second question was, we do interview for every single position that is hired in this district because based on this policy, you have to do an interview?
What I'm saying is, this is what the policy says. I cannot speak to the implementation of the policy.
Can we ask HR what the, if, I mean, if we don't, if we have a policy, but it's not what we do, do we want it in the policy? Is my question.
I guess we'd have to really define interview. I think there have been some promotions and, you know, some in-step promotions, in-step moves that we probably wouldn't have a formal interview for, but we would definitely have a process of decision-making that, again, depending on how we define interview, at the end of the day, is there a process in place for every position that's filled in this district? The answer is yes.
I guess I would just ask that HR and legal make sure that they think the words reflect, we're doing what we want to do.
We'll do that. We will do that.
Any other questions on any other policies? These will be presented at our next board meeting on the 28th of this month for a vote. Other business, new business and agenda recommendations. Mr. Lewis will present the resolution in support of education funding reform.
Good evening. Dr. Jared already alluded to the growing support for Senate Bill 16 throughout the state. To give you a little background about this particular bill, it actually passed the Senate back in the spring during the General Assembly session, and it was laid over for the House of Representatives. And since that time, a great deal of angst has surfaced, because what this does is, this is not going to place any additional pressures or burden onto the state of Illinois's budget for education. What this does is takes the available monies that are appropriated and approved in the state budget and real allocates them in such a way that school systems that are likened to ours, that have high poverty counts, falling equalized assess valuations, are, will be benefit, will be benefactors of the revised policy for Rockford Public Schools. That equates to about $17.9 million. We can look at Belvidere, Harlem, North Boone, and Winnebago County, all of which see pickups to include Rockton, Hananeega, so all of our sister school systems in our region stand to benefit substantially from this bill. That said, what we're hoping is to establish a coalition with all of our elected bodies here in the Rockford region, so that when the General Assembly calls back on, that they would be in support of this bill. There are other school systems, of course, they've coined them as winners and losers, and as stated, Rockford is a, would be a winner if SB 16 passes. I don't have to address the board about the falling EAV in our community. I don't have to address the board about the status of poverty in our community and how these dollars could really be utilized in such a way that we can continue the positive momentum with programming and the like for our communities. So what we're going to ask, what the administration is asking, is that the board sign on in support of this bill, and thereafter, Dr. Jared and myself will be reaching out to the city, the county, and other elected bodies, hoping to grow that coalition of support here in our region. So again, as the House reassembles in the fall, we have a united front in terms of something that will absolutely work for our region, and I'll entertain any questions anyone might have.
Any questions for Mr. Lewis, comments? Mr. Rollins?
Is this a form resolution? Are there other school districts that are going to be adopting this as well? Is this something that the coalition has put together?
That is, yes, sir. The coalition has put this form together. I can't speak to what other districts have in fact supported it. I know some of that information has been provided, and maybe Dr. Jared could rattle off a few districts, but yes, this is a form resolution.
There are well over 100, probably closer to 200 now statewide that have signed on, and I signed on personally, but the step I'd like to take is to have our board sign on. I think that's a more powerful statement.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Lewis? Okay. This will be presented for a vote at our next board meeting on the 28th. Our next topic is Career Cruising Contract. Mrs. Weatherly?
Hi. Can I have you hit the button to turn the mic on there? There you go. Thank you.
Well, I am proposing that we purchase Career Cruising for the use in our high schools for the purpose of college application tracking and course planning. I submitted a proposal in Board Docs.
Can you give us a big picture overview?
Absolutely. So we currently have a partnership with Career Cruising that's provided to us through Cianci. Our students have the ability to do, they have the ability to do career exploration with that tool right now, and they have the ability to do some basic college searches. But with the addition of the $12,000 add-on, we would have the ability to do more robust college searches. I have with me a college career, a Career Cruising rep with me.
Hi.
Great.
But we would have the ability to do some robust searches with colleges. We'd be able to track our students, their applications, and compare them to their peers so that they would be able to see how they compare with their GPA and their course selections to their peers based on the admissions at our colleges and our partners. I apologize. Let me pull up my spreadsheet here. So in order to get to this decision, I was able to partner with counselors and administrators and academy coaches in the buildings to review several programs. We looked at Naviance, we looked at Career Cruising, and we looked at Overgrad. Many of, those three companies offered similar programs, but Career Cruising stood out in that, number one, we already have that partnership with them. And again, they have the ability to provide Achieve, which is the program that matches students with colleges. They have Springboard, which is a career exploration tool which we already have, but it would be utilized more by adding on the program that Cianci is providing for us right now, which is called Unite, where students would have the ability to search more about their careers. And then we have the Pathfinder, which is really the piece that I feel is going to be the most beneficial for us. It is where students will have the ability to create a four-year course plan by choosing their classes as early as eighth grade for their entire high school career, and again, making connections with what that course plan looks like compared to others who had that course plan and were admitted into college. It would allow us to do online course selection, which is now a paper pencil process. Students, again, would be able to select those classes using the computer each cycle, which is going to create some efficiencies for us as we work to streamline our course selection process and our master schedule building. Am I missing any key pieces of the program?
Well, I don't know what you guys know about.
This is Jennifer.
I'm Jennifer from Career Cruising, but I don't know how much you guys know about Inspired. What did you guys call it again? You call it?
We're calling it Unite.
Are you guys familiar with Unite? I know I can't probably be asking you questions, but Unite is where we're now connecting, Career Cruising is working with local businesses in the area, right? And we're connecting them with students through Career Cruising. So when a student is interested in an internship, a job shadow, they can automatically be connected through Career Cruising with businesses in their area for that, okay? So that is one component that Cianci is now paying for, for Career Cruising to have, for your students to have. Now, we have some other areas of where you can build on that Tiffany was talking about, where we have the ability to build an online course book for your schools. Each course book will be individual. It'll be different. It won't be the same as all the other high schools unless you want them to be. With that, the parents have access to the online course book, the students do, the staff. On that course book will also be all of your prereqs, so the students will know what the prereqs are that they have to have before they can be selecting for that course. Now, the state of Illinois is now asking for students to have a four-year plan. This entitles the students to start creating a four-year plan starting in eighth grade. They can plan all their classes they want to take for grades nine through 12, and then it'll also let them know what classes they can and cannot be taking based on their grades and what classes they have not fulfilled yet. Now, in addition to that, it also allows them to start planning for colleges. They can send unlimited transcripts through Career Cruising. They can also see where their peers got into certain colleges and where they stand in getting to that college based on their GPA and their ACT score. There are a lot of other components on there, too. It's more probably better if I gave you a little demonstration, but we don't really have time for that today.
Is the, is a $12,000 expense, is that a one-time or is that an annual?
Unfortunately, it's an annual.
Okay, all right. Okay. That's okay.
But I will tell you, you guys are getting a pretty significant discount just because of our relationship with Cianci. So we gave you guys, I would say, probably close to a 60% discount because we like you.
Anybody else have any other questions? Mr. Connor? He's probably going to ask you an IT question.
Actually, I'm going to ask a usage question first, is that this is essentially a module that I assume that we're going to be using.
Heading on.
And there's, I think, I can't remember the name of the course they go through, but I assume that as part of that eighth-grade course where they plan, this will be essentially integrated into that plan.
They are currently using Career Cruising in that class?
In that eighth-grade class.
Yes, they are currently using that.
But they can start planning, though, for eighth-grade courses, or sorry, they can start planning in eighth grade for classes they want to take in ninth grade.
For the ninth grade, yeah, for the four-year.
And that's a part of that program already. It's just paper pencil at this time. They are creating their five-year plan.
So this just automates that part that was going to be, so in, I assume, and I don't know, is this web-based today, basically?
It is.
Okay.
And one thing I forgot to mention is that when the students graduate from Rockford, they still have access to Career Cruising. We never delete a student plan. So when they graduate, they have access to the resume, to all the businesses in the area for internships, job shadows, whatever it may be. So it's a lifetime tool for them.
And if I'm clear on this, the 545 that Cianci pays is kind of like the base, and then this is an additional module on top of that, right?
Exactly.
And then the licensing is essentially unlimited by location, meaning by high school, essentially, right?
Correct.
Because we have all five in there, so, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, out of curiosity, because you clearly have the middle schools where this is occurring today, and they're not mentioned in this licensing.
Cianci is paying for the middle school, and they're, and right now, they're paying for the middle school license and for the tools for the eighth graders to use for your course planning. That doesn't cost the middle school any fee for that.
Ah, okay. So this would not add for the middle school?
Yeah.
Okay, it's only because it's for the high school.
It's for the high school.
Yeah.
Exactly. Great, great question, though.
Ms. Powers, you have a question?
My question's around the implementation plan that I'm looking at, and when you say student and parent deployment pilot Auburn High School with the controlled student population, so is it all of Auburn or just the HPS within Auburn?
Just the HPS within Auburn, because it's fewer than 200 students.
So fewer than 200 students?
Just because of our short time period and registration truly will begin December, January, I didn't think it would be feasible to start this new online registration and roll it out for the entire building. So I decided to make it a smaller population, which would be about 200 students, which I felt would be more manageable with a quick rollout.
I will, I will say, sorry, that it takes us on our end about two to three weeks to build the course book, and then we have to do training for all the counselors and staff. So if the, if you do have, you know, course registration in December, January, it might be best to pilot with a small group and then be ready for the next year.
So everyone else would continue business as usual for this year as we fine-tune that with the HPS in Auburn with the expectation that everyone will be doing it next year for registration.
And so is there a backup plan for students and parents who don't have computer access at home for them to be able to view their plan, update it, work on it? I mean, our, that's a real issue for our population.
Yes, it is. However, with the implementation of the academies, we now have academy team meetings where we have all of the teachers and counselors, administrators sitting down together, and out of that will come the idea that it's not just the family's role or the counselor's role to get students registered for their courses. It's everyone's responsibility. So students will have time during classes to get that online course plan created. They also have their one-hour lunch period where they would have access to the library or to computers to go in and create their course plan.
Right, but they're, the parent is going to be obligated to go somewhere.
Correct.
If they don't have internet access at home.
They can print it out, and they can print it out, too.
Yes, it's something that is printable. They can take it home if the parent wants to.
That's what I was looking for.
Yes, it can be printed. And a part of the registration process is, there's an expectation that it will be printed out, and there's a parent signature page, which we utilize right now with our paper version so that parents are maintained or they're in the loop.
And so will this give us the metrics to be able to understand how many students requested, I'm making it up, AP Physics at Guilford, and because we didn't have enough to meet that section, we had to cancel it, and so they had to take their second choice or third choice or how, will this give us metrics around student dissatisfaction, for lack of a better word, in course selection?
Yes, so, for example, I'm from Madison.
Where's the button?
It timed out.
Oh, shoot. So, for example, I'm from Madison, Wisconsin. So, for example, Sheboygan High School, they have two high schools up there, and they've been using this program for six years. One reason why they like it is because they can do a forecasting with their students so they can have their students go in, start planning what classes they want to take for the following year, and you guys get a nice report of how many students want to take advanced chemistry or, you know, honors English, for example. And if you only have one student in honors English, well, then you're probably not going to have that class. So when it comes time to registration in January, February, you could eliminate that course if you wanted to because you knew in the forecasting you only had one student. Just an example. But you have about over 100 reporting tools for you, so that way you can see where your students are at for registration.
And again, with the online course planning, students would have made that plan prior to that window of registration. So we'll have that information prior to starting the registration process, where the way that we do it now, we don't know until registration is upon us and the students make their selections.
Thank you.
Great questions, though.
Appreciate the input.
And just so you do know, this wasn't a question, but I was going to let you know, we have a K-5 portion, so at the end of the day, this could be a K-adult program for you guys, because I know we were talking about elementary earlier, so.
Okay.
Time is of the essence, though.
Thank you very much. Okay. This will be presented for a vote at our October 28th board meeting. Dr. Wolf, I believe you are next with the Professional Development for Arts Educators Grant Acceptance.
Thank you. From here on after, we'll just call it PDAE.
Okay.
For the P-D-A-E.
Mike will remember that.
We present to you tonight an offer for grant acceptance. The total is just under $1.4 million, would be over a four-year period from the U.S. Department of Education. It would support professional development for art educators and target Kappa teachers starting off in the first year, moving to all core curriculum teachers, sixth through 12th grade, and builds upon our partnership with the Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts. So it provides, a detailed listing is available in the attachment that says PDAE Fact Sheet, but it really is professional development and opportunities for teachers to refine their craft, to improve student experiences in classrooms.
Very cool. Any questions for Dr. Wolf? Mr. Connor?
One quick thing, you did say art, you meant arts, right?
Yes, arts. Visual, performing, dance, music, and things that I would be horrible at.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, this will come for a vote then also at our next board meeting. Mrs. Cyrus, you're up next with the SAS Star Autism Support. Mrs. Cyrus, you're up next with the SAS Star Autism Support, Inc.
Good evening. I'm bringing up before you tonight a program for our early childhood and kindergarten through second-grade autism classrooms throughout the district. This particular program is, is called SAS, the Star Autism Support Program. And it provide, what, what's before you is an inclusive, an all-inclusive program, so it will be the, the materials that we get for the classrooms, travel for the trainers to come to train, and five days of professional development for the teachers. The critical component to the STAR program that staff, when they brought it forward for my approval, they were looking at the foundation that we want to establish in our early childhood autism programs for a strong communication system that students would then take forward to their elementary schools. Because one of the biggest hindrances for kids with autism is a lack of an, of an effective way to communicate. So this is before you tonight, I'll entertain any questions, and it's up in two weeks for a vote.
Any questions? Ms. Powers.
So could you just build on what you said in terms of, was it the autism team that identified the need and they went out and vetted different potential training sources? Or could you speak more to how?
It came to me through, from the autism team, that's correct. They have been to several districts that surround us within an hour to see the program in action and came forward that they really felt that this was the pro... And some of the teachers that, from those classrooms, this is all last year, went with them to, to a few, and they really believe this is what we need to do at the elementary, early childhood tier, to put the foundation in, to move them forward.
Any other questions for Mrs. Cyrus? Hey, thank you. Mr. Lewis, I believe you are...
I have my light on.
Oh, there's, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson.
And the appendix says it says five total in-class autism support trainings to be determined. Did you already speak to what those trainings were going to be?
Well, they are actually coaching, where the, the people from the company come and work in the classrooms when the children are there to, to make sure that the program is being implemented with fidelity. And the reason it says to be determined is that we may not use all five days. That's what we have proposed, that we would use. If we need less, then we won't use all of the five days.
Did you say this helps with children with autism with their communication? Is that what it is?
Yes. It helps us to, children with autism don't have a method or a mechanism to communicate. Most of them are nonverbal. They use gestures and pictures and, and various communication devices that assist with telling them what are, telling us what their wants and needs are. And so one of the key components in autism is to establish that strong communication system that they can take with them as they exit the early childhood program into kindergarten and first-grade classrooms. So yes.
So this training is for the, for the students, not for the teachers to be able to communicate? It's for the students to be able to communicate?
The, the systems are for the students to be able to communicate. The training is to assist teachers with how to create those communication systems.
Okay, any other questions? Not, thank you. We'll move on to Mr. Lewis, who's going to talk about Securities and Exchange Commission, Municipalities Continuing Disclosure Cooperation Initiative questionnaire. Yes.
That's a mouthful.
That's right. It is a mouthful.
So I'm going to start with the, the date 2010, which is when we issued Health, Life, Safety Bonds, an amount of about $10.2 million. At that time, we had a different underwriter in Robert W. Barrett and Associates, who, when they were writing the disclosure documents for the bond sale, they had verbiage that suggested that we were compliant with a part of the SEC's reporting requirements to this system called EMA, which is a digital repository for all of your financial statements. Robert Barrett suggested that we were compliant when we were not, in fact, compliant because our financial statements had not been filed for the years 2007 through 2013. In March of this year, the SEC's Enforcement Division came out with a circular saying that they were going to crack down on underwriters and issuers, the district is an issuer, for those who said that they were compliant but were not, in fact, compliant. So from the 2013 issuance of the $99.9 million, our closing dis, statements stated that we were not compliant. And they went back and filed, and they being Stifel Nicolaus, went back and filed all of our financial statements to the EMA SEC repository, all the way back until 2007. But because our 2010 disclosure statement said we were compliant and we, in fact, were not compliant, we had a choice to self-report to the SEC the fact that we were not compliant, which is what we're bringing before you now. We went to bond counsel to get a suggestion as to what we needed to do. Just, you know, better judgment suggests to me, when somebody's asking us whether we should disclose something, it's just for the sake of full transparency, we thought that we should report, but we couldn't get an accurate answer. So Ms. Holdley secured external general counsel, who suggested to us that we did, in fact, should go ahead and self-report, which is what's before you now. So what we're doing is, this is a, a statement that will come back to you in two weeks that we'll eventually have to send to the SEC. There could be penalties involved, but as we've been informed, the, the SEC Enforcement Division is more so concerned with the underwriters who did not give accurate information than they are with the issuers. So this is just for information for the board, and again, you'll be asked to take action on it, and I'll certainly answer as many questions as I can.
Mr. Connor?
Any idea of the scope or breadth of the potential penalties?
Well, underwriters have been fined as much as a half million dollars. It's tiered based on the size of the issuance. But again, as it's explained to me, every bond issue, to include refinanced issues from the year of 2007 to, to date, there are approximately 10 to 20% of all issues that have this, this problem. So we're just being, you know, self-reporting, full disclosure, getting it out to the board, and of course, we'll, after the board's taken action on it, we'll get it out to the SEC as well.
So if we say 10 hail Marys, does that make it better?
It wouldn't be any different than doing 100.
Just checking, okay, just checking.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Lewis? And this one presented at our October 28th meeting for a vote. On the next item, administration has requested the board suspend the rules to consider the following item. If the board does not suspend the rules, then this will be considered as the first reading of the proposed Health, Life, Safety Amendment. So this is a long list of schools for HVAC, windows, all kinds of things. They're all listed out there in what schools that they apply to. So I would, at this time, ask for a motion and a second to suspend the rules to consider these life safety amendments. So moved. Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Any discussion, no discussion? Okay. So I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the motion to suspend the rules.
Mrs. Powers?
No.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes with five yeses and two noes.
Okay, is Mr., are you going to, is he going to make a presentation? Are you making a, Mr. Schmidt, are you making a presentation on this?
Oh, I need a motion and a second to approve the Health, Life, Safety Amendments.
So moved. Second by Mr. Connor. Second by Mr. Rollins. Discussion? Ms. Jackson?
So may we ask now why we were asked to suspend the rules? Is this a timing issue on all of these?
Go ahead.
Yes, with these life safety amendments, this is for the bond that we anticipate selling in January, February next year for Health, Life, Safety. We moved up the time schedule based on bond counsel to sell this bond. So we asked to suspend a rule, so once the board approves this, we need to route this onto the Regional Office of Education, and then they need to reroute it onto State Board of Education. What we're doing is we're gaining a couple of weeks in the timing of this to make sure that we have these amendments approved and in hand prior to us going out there and selling the bonds. If we do not have these amendments in hand, if we only have none of these in hand, then we cannot sell that $18 million bond. So this would buy us a couple of extra weeks to make sure that we go through the full process to get the State Board of Education to approve these.
Dr. Juret?
Just to be clear, these are not new projects. These are projects that have already been vetted through the facilities process, and this is designating them for payment through Health, Life, Safety Bonds, which has been part of the process as well. So this is just a timing issue, it buys us two extra weeks.
Any other questions or comments? I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the motion and to approve the Health, Life, Safety Amendments.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Okay, thank you. We have one other item, I believe, on our agenda, and that's the Facilities Master Plan Construction Schedule. And Mr. Schmidt, are you presenting on this?
Yes, in your packet, we have the construction schedule that we laid out with our project management team internally and with Ragnar Benson. We presented this at the Operations Committee. In your packet, you have that schedule based on, there's two sorted versions of it. One is by school year, and the other one is by building. The Operations Committee, we vetted this through the Operations Committee on two separate meetings. They approved it to move it on. This is the schedule that we have laid out for the remaining work for the Facilities Master Plan. There's things in this thing that are contingent on still some board approval and with a referendum, but this lays out everything from building additions, potential new construction, interior finishes, boiler work, window work, everything that we have allocated for funds in the building is on this construction schedule.
Any questions for Mr. Schmidt or any comments? Ms. McCulloch?
I have a couple of comments. I, it was my expectation that by putting the Oversight Committee in place, they would be the committee that would, instead of operations, that would take the onus of really vetting whether or not this plan is something for the board to approve. And I do understand it went to operations, and, you know, they had one meeting and they saw it. But this plan looks at multi-years. And so for us as a board to say, yeah, we approve this, won't there be a problem if the committee, then as they're looking at, on a month-to-month basis or whatever, at the numbers, at the timelines, and comes back and says, yeah, this isn't going to work, you're going to need to adjust this? Do those all have to come to the board for approval? So that's one question. Another question is, do we, I mean, does this need a board vote? Does it, do we need to just accept it? And if we accept it, will that allow for those changes as recommended by the subcommittee or the board committee, the Oversight Committee? And, you know, it's, it's, and I know we need to have a timeline, but to put one out there without having all the information is, is good information for the community as we come forward with the referendum. But we, we need to know that they approve of the new construction before we say this is what we're going to do. So there's, I mean, we're not voting on it tonight, but I, I don't know how, I'd love to hear some more comments from my fellow board members as to how they perceive that, what we need to do with this and, and what our expectations are.
Mr. Owens?
Yeah, just to correct one thing that was said, this is, we actually saw this at the Operations Committee twice. This was brought originally to the Operations Committee at the September meeting. We, at that time, sent it out to the entire board and asked that the board take a look at it and ask any questions that they had. But we also asked it be brought back to the Operations Committee so that people would have more time to look at it. That was done, it was brought back to the Operations Committee in October. Again, emailed out to the board, asked for anybody to comment on it that had any comments. You know, I understand that at some point, this is all going to be transitioned to the committee, but we also have to get moving, particularly on the very large amount of work that is going to start this summer, including the selection of the architects so that the architects can define it, can, can design it. Based on the design, then they have to start putting bidding documents together. You know, this is a real process. And to have everything ready to go by next summer, I, I think this is something that we can't wait for this committee to get constituted, to get its feet under itself, to figure out, you know, what exactly they're doing, to get to the level of detail that we've all had with it so far, and then start making decisions. I would say it's my expectation that if we approve the schedule and if the committee later feels that something in the schedule ought to be adjusted, that should come back to the board, since we voted on it, and, and the committee would be recommending a change to something that the board had voted on.
Mr. Roll, may I ask him a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Scirvano?
Sure.
Did the Ops Committee ever, at any time, consider just approving the work for the rest of this year so that the committee can then look at the long, long-term timeline as they get more situated? Because I do understand we have a timeline and we want, you know, to get the architectural plans done. We want to start getting the bidding going so that we're ready to go when the school year ends. And, and we won't be able to do that if we wait two months for the committee to get in place. But what about?
I, I would, well, that discussion did not come up. I guess I would have to defer to Mr. Schmidt about how much of this stuff is interrelated and whether there's anything that's close to a clean break where we're only looking at work that has to be done over the next year or whether things that go beyond that year are interrelated with things that are approved for the first year, which is a real possibility to me, but I defer to, to Mr. Schmidt on that topic.
Dr. Juret, you want to add something?
I would just like to interject briefly. I think that the other concern about not providing clear direction, I think it's really important. I make it a habit to visit all of the schools annually, and I've done six or seven of those visits and a number of those this year already, and a number of those schools have already made it clear that one of the issues that's out there is they want certainty in terms of knowing exactly when the movement is going to occur in terms of teachers and students and wanting to be engaged in the process of how we will make the decision of, of people moving into new buildings. And so I think that, that's one advantage to the board at this point, providing some, some clarity on that issue so that there is certainty for families, parents, students, and ultimately, our staff as well.
Ms. Jackson?
So I do have a question. At Operations, we had, I believe it was three charts, and one of them was the transition schedule, which really talks about us redoing boundaries and different things like that. That's not part of this? I only see, too, an October schedule sorted by school year and then by name. What about this transition schedule?
The transition is just a subsection of this construction schedule. The construction schedule was based on when we would do construction at the current buildings based on the Facilities Master Plan with closing the facilities and potentially building new buildings. So it's kind of embedded into this construction schedule.
Well, I looked, I didn't see it, is it somewhere at the end? Because this says, like, change Brookview attendance zone. So you're telling me that's in one of these two that's on board?
This is, what we're asking you to approve is the construction schedule. That's just a, just a little bit detail of the transition when we move the zones. That really is not a construction, the, this is the construction schedule.
But if we're talking about keeping our families updated and staff about the changes that are taking place, isn't this a piece of it, this transition schedule, or no?
You know, it, it's, it's how, you can think as a construction schedule is the policy and the transition plan is the regulation that we do of how we're going to implement the construction schedule. So, you know, we have that construction schedule out there, we can, or the transition plan. If it's the will of the board, we can bring that up there and present that. But we're asking you to approve the construction schedule.
So is this transition schedule then driving the construction schedule? Is that what I'm hearing?
Construction schedule drives the transition schedule.
Ms. McCulloch?
So this is new business, we would approve it if we, if that's what we're going to do or accept it on the 28th. The election is the 7th of November, so there's just one meeting between now or... I have a problem approving anything that, that is dependent on... problem approving anything that is dependent on the referendum and then come back to us if the referendum doesn't pass. I'd really like to know- let's just do this in one shot. Let's say, here's the referendum. It passed on the 4th. Let's vote on it on the 11th because we know it's in place. We've already approved. Tonight, we voted on the architects. I mean, they can get their work going, but for the whole rest of this, does anybody- does administration have any problem waiting until the 11th to vote on it? Because I really don't want- I don't want to tell the community that we're going to assume that you're going to approve that referendum, that we would like you to. We're going- I, as a board member, would like you to, but until you do, I'm not going to base all my plans on that because it can't build a new school unless that passes. That's what we've told people. We're not- we, at least we as a board, I know there's other options, but we as a board had open conversation that we weren't going to look at those. So, would that make a difference in the timeline? The 11th.
I'm going to have Mrs. Holdley talk for a minute on the issue that of voting or accepting or whatever, so that clarifies that a little bit.
I understand there's specific direction that the board wants to give as far as the timing of different projects and stuff. This type of very detailed level scheduling, though, is not something that would be typical for the board to approve, and that is because there are so many variables out there. For example, you're saying this is going to be completed in the month of whatever year it is, and that may not occur based upon bids, based upon other events. So, every little change that would happen would then have to come to the board, even though it doesn't really make sense to, okay, this is going to not happen in July, it's going to happen in August, or all of that. It's one thing to keep the board informed and updated about all of that, but it doesn't make sense from an approval standpoint. It does make sense from the standpoint of accepting. Here's- we're accepting this, we understand, and then being kept up to date and in the loop of any changes, and I think that's what the committee is going to be doing. But I think administration is looking at trying to put together bids for the summer, if I'm not mistaken. So, a lot of what's being asked or shown to you tonight has nothing to do with new schools, but I think they are wanting to get that direction. So, whether it's an acceptance of a plan that's out there or approval, this is not the type of detailed level work that would be typical for a board to approve.
Ms. McCulloch.
So, if indeed we- and I can make a motion to accept as compared to- but if indeed that's the direction we go, I would just like some input from administration. Can- do you have any problem with us waiting to accept it until the 11th? Is that going to put- that's two weeks from the 28th to the 11th. And I say that because even though we're really focused on this year, the new construction is indeed in what we would be accepting as part of that timeline.
Yes, but even the new construction, there's still two hurdles to the new construction based on the resolution. Yeah. So, we still have to do-
Could I say something? No, there's three.
Three. Yeah, you turned your light off, or it went off.
So, which is why I think it would be better to just put an asterisk on there, and I was going to comment on this anyway because it seems like there is a credible amount of misconception out there, and I'm not even sure it's being reported correctly. You know, there was an article in the paper today that said the two new schools were set for 2016. They're not set. So, there's- my recollection from the resolution that we adopted was that there are really three conditions, three preconditions. One is the passage of a referendum. Second is the board receiving a report from this Facilities Committee no earlier than December 1st of 2015, and as part of that process, the board, and really the purpose, from my standpoint, anyway, the purpose of that report from the Facilities Committee is to tell us that they feel that the entire facilities plan can be accomplished within the $250 million that's been allocated. And the third is, you know, I got the sense, and I think this was built into the resolution, that we, as a board, want to make sure that we actually have $250 million to spend. So, there are three preconditions out there, and that shouldn't stop us from accepting a schedule as long as everybody understands that there are things, and I think Mrs. Holdley is exactly right, there's going to be a lot more than that that are subject to conditions, and- but at some point, we have to start telling people what we plan on doing and the schedule on which we plan on doing it, if those conditions are met. And I think this is a good first step.
Mr. Connor.
If I understood what Mrs. Holdley was saying here is that essentially, by us, if you will, approving this, we're not really approving an exact schedule in that sense. We're saying we-
No, you would be approving. That's why you would want to accept.
All right. Well, then, maybe I misunderstood what you were saying because I thought you were saying that it's unusual for a board to have this level of detail that we're actually approving. I took it more to mean, you know, that it gives people a planning document, but there's no guarantee of any dates just because we approved this.
A good analogy would be a strategic plan. When the board comes with our strategic plan recommendation, that's another type of document you would accept. If you were to approve a strategic plan, you didn't- you'd, in a sense, have to- anything you didn't do exactly according to that four years down the road, and I think this is a very similar type document. We're accepting it, sets general direction, but does not commit to every detail.
That's the magic word for me, I think, to Mr. Rollins' points. He's correct, because I was thinking about that, that December of 2015 is when the official report goes in. So, I think that, and thankfully, not being a lawyer, I don't have to worry about my language being quite so exact, but I think the point is that this is a directional document, and this is the direction we're going in. We're not saying we're going to have new schools. We're not going to say this can't change, but this is the direction, and specifically for the next year, obviously, if we want to bid, there are certain things that, yes, are baked in because we're going to get that, that's going to go through, and that specific part will be bid, which will come back and we will approve in detail. So, this is directional only. All right. I just want to- can I say it one more time? Remember, three is the magic repetition. Directional only, right? Okay.
General, Mrs. Powers.
So, on the process or the act of accepting the plan, I am in favor of doing that because I think that this is a very formal way for us to hand off what the board's intent is to the facilities plan in a written, formal, detailed way, and where they go from it with it from there is exactly why we formulated that committee. But I think this represents consensus of the board at this point in time, with all the information that we have, this is what we intend. So, for that reason, I would accept the plan. In terms of content and changes to the plan, though, this is where, I guess, for me, it gets a little dicey. Let me pick on our pet Kennedy Pool renovations is set to be ready for the start of the next school year. So, you know, those kinds of things, I guess that's where I would assume that our board members that are going to be on that committee can direct them that that's not really subject to their change because that's a direction of the board that has been a hot issue. We have to get that pool up and running. So, is that- however, if there were something else that is a significant change, then I would look to our project managers to be able to provide a pretty simple change management document for the facilities team to use to report recommended changes to us. So, I'm assuming that's a pretty easy thing for them to do. Okay. Thank you.
Very well said. Any other questions or comments? So, we will- this will come up for acceptance then at our next board meeting, okay? Or on- do we want to move it to the 11th? Ms. Jackson.
I don't see a problem with moving it to the 11. There's not a lot that's going to happen between the second board meeting and then after the 11, so.
I just don't ask the 12.
Oh, okay.
Do we have to do anything to use the- to put the word acceptance in there, or will that- It will be in the script. We don't have to make a motion. Thank you.
So, so, I'm sensing a consensus that November 12 would be okay. Are you okay with that? Okay, Ms. Jackson? Okay, good. Okay. So, we'll- that'll come up for acceptance at our November 12 board meeting. Okay. Great discussion. Is there any other business for this evening? Any other items? Any other policies you want Mrs. Holdley to read? Okay. I will take a motion for adjournment.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Powers.
So, well, the policies-
Hang on one second. We got one question.
So, the policies that were reviewed are those that were initiated or recommended by ISBE. I mean, is there a plan for other policies to be evaluated and looked at? So, if you could just speak to that, just so we know when the other shoe's going to drop.
Right. I have met with some of the curriculum team members about some of our antiquated policies in Section 600 and 700, which are really the curriculum-driven policies. They are reviewing them and coming forward with some changes. I'm not sure that it's going to be, you know, within the next couple of weeks. It'll probably be in January or February is what they're targeting.
We have a motion from Mrs. Jackson to adjourn. Second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Same sign. We are done at 8:58 or 6:00 or whatever that number is out there.